Church, under the leadership of Dr. B.W. McClendon. We're grateful for his hospitality today. I was recently talking with someone and I was saying, you know, a lot of times we have trouble with different, new and change. And so whenever you're a visionary, as our pastor is, he sees the need for partnerships and joining forces and collaborating. We can't be competing with everybody. There are some people we're gonna have to cooperate with and work in order to bring forth a change in our society that we all desire and want. And so to get started this evening, we're gonna open with a scripture and prayer. The scripture can be found in the Gospel of Matthew, chapter 22, verse 37 through 39. Do everyone have access to a program? Everyone have program? We're gonna try to follow the program. We will follow the program as printed. This is a gathering for information and resources. And so we don't wanna take up a lot of time in formality, but we do want to take enough time so that you know that the information is valuable. So Matthew, chapter 22, beginning at verse 37. By the inspiration of God and the pen of Matthew, these words are recorded. Jesus said unto him, Thou shalt love the Lord thy God with all thy heart and with all thy soul and with all thy mind. This is the great and first commandment. And the second is liken unto it. Thou shalt love thy neighbor as thyself. We read into your hearing, Matthew 22, verses 37 through 39. We ask that there be a blessing to the reading of God's word. Every head bowed, every eye closed. Gracious Father, we come calling upon your name. We come, the heavenly Father, because we know that we are the creation and you are the Creator. We know, the heavenly Father, that we can't do anything without you. Without you, our plans will surely fail. But with you, the heavenly Father, all things are possible. And so we pray right now that you will visit us in this meeting, in this town hall meeting. We pray that you will be with us in this time, in our city, in our state, and in our nation, and in our world. We know, the heavenly Father, there's sickness and disease, there's evil and violence, there's hardship and pain. But we pray right now, the heavenly Father, that this town hall meeting will provide the information, the resource to help somebody along the way. If we can't help somebody, we can help somebody to help somebody, that they may make this life, this journey lighter. And so we pray now for this great church that's hosting this event. We pray that you will bless St. James with the blessing that you see her standing near. Bless the pastors, Dr. McClendon. Then heavenly Father, we ask that you bless these presenters and the organizations that they represent. Then heavenly Father, bless the people in the pews. We pray that you will bless them where they are, whatever situation, whatever event that they're dealing with. We pray that you will bless them and let them know that it was you that favored them. And so we pray now that you will bless this time, that it may bring glory to your name and bring edification to your people. We ask these and all other blessings in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen, amen. At this time, we're gonna have more of a opening remarks by the host pastor, Reverend Dr. B.W. McClendon.
Good evening to everyone. I will make my comments extremely brief to preside and minister this evening, Dr. Nathan Robertson, who's part of our pastoral staff here at St. James. Also, we thank God for our associate pastor, as well, Dr. Leon McCowen, part of our pastoral staff. And to all of you, our elders, I see present and other associate ministers, welcome to St. James. And we're so happy that you all are here tonight. I wanna let you know, I agree 100% with Dr. Robertson, what Karl Marx said in the coming manifesto, knowledge is power. And so we wanna make sure you get exposed as much knowledge as possible. I believe this is important because part of the gospel is holistically. And so it's important to me, for me to give up my prayer meeting and my Bible study. Somebody always say, "Amen." And my members know I don't do that too often. My prayer meeting, good to see my elder here over, I pray, I also elder Adam come in, but also I see Deacon Maynor, and then also my Bible study. But we wanna do this tonight holistically to get more information to the people of God. Good to see Pastor Hendrix and Pastor Jasper, and we're here for getting more information. So that's enough for me. They know I'm a preacher, and anytime I see more than two people, I'll start preaching, but I'm not on the preach tonight. So God bless you and thank God for the presenters who are here. Looking forward to hear from you guys.
Amen. We are truly grateful to serve with and under Dr. McClendon. Now, what we're going to do is, I'm going to just briefly introduce the presenters, and they will in turn introduce themselves. And then following the presentation, they will be in the hallway to my left, to your right. We have the UT nurses, they're here and they're prepared to give COVID shots if need be, boosters if you needed, or if you need to set an appointment. There's no reason to leave here and not have that checked off for your to-do list. So if you haven't had your COVID shot, we do ask that you go visit with the UT nurses. Besides the UT nurses in the multipurpose room, we're going to have Rob, he's going to be with Age of Central Texas, they're gonna be in room 152. Our own Reverend Wallace, Sr., in the Black Men's Health Clinic is going to be in room 150. And Brian Potter, the Navigator Health and Life Insurance Consulting, he's here with Obamacare. I believe they're going to be in the foyer. And Janice Hall with the Austin Public Health is also going to be in the foyer slash lobby, the front entrance area. We couldn't figure out what the title is gonna be. And we also want to give a special shout out to Brianna Stovall, we're gonna have her to stand. She's with the Medicare, she's a Medicare advisor with the Cochrane Group. So if you have any Medicare questions, you can go and see her, and she also will be in room 153 in this hallway. So we wanna start the conversation, but if you have any specific questions, a question that you don't generally wanna ask in public, you just wanna ask somebody one-on-one, they're gonna make themselves available. And immediately following, there's going to be lunch boxes in the back for those of us who came here and haven't had dinner. Go get you a box lunch. And that way, some people are going to get some lunches, some go to meet with individuals, and then we can kind of flow around. Does that make sense? Amen, amen. So let me, I'm gonna introduce all the presenters, and then they're going to come at their own time, and then they're going to make their presentation. And if there's any questions while they're up, please hold up your hand and we get to you. But again, we wanna be timely in this. We want more of the conversation to be personal, one-on-one. So if you have a question for them that's general enough, they'll be able to answer, but we will ask that you ask them more personally and privately. First, we have, our presenter is Janice Hall. Again, she's with the Austin Public Health. She's a program coordinator, and she's trying to bridge the gap between Austin Public Health and the community. And so we're grateful to have her here with us. Following her would be Brian Potter, again, with Navigator Health. He's all things Obamacare. When that first hit the scene, he was the first with the Department of Insurance to work with Obamacare, ACA, in trying to get people signed up. Then we have Rob Fabian of Age of Central Texas, and they'll be describing how there's some resources for the caregivers of our senior saints and older adults. And then we have Larry Wallace, our own Larry Wallace, Sr., with the Black Men's Health Clinic, and he's starting, you know, some of us, we're having a little trouble. I got a client for you. I had to go to the hospital with some family, and they were fighting it all away. I was like, "You the sick one, they not sick, bro. You sick. You need them." So I'm gonna have to get with you, and maybe we can make a connection and save a life together. And so without any further ado, at this time, we're gonna give it into the hands of Janice, and then following Janice, Brian and Rob, and then Larry. Show us some love as she come.
Hello, hello, hello. Hello, everyone. My name is Janice Hall, and I'm just so happy to be with y'all today. And so I'm from Austin Public Health. Everyone, at least in the last two years, knows Austin Public Health now, right? However, I am not here to talk about vaccines. I want you to get a vaccine, I want you to be safe. UT is here for that, but I'm here to tell you that Austin Public Health is so much more than the place to go get vaccines or to get tested. So we offer, my department is actually called Chronic Disease Injury Prevention Unit. It's very long, don't worry about it. The big thing that I want you to remember is that we have free resources here in your community that come to your church, all kinds of resources. So we have walking groups. Now, I know that this church has a really great health ministry, and a lot of things are already here, but I want you to know that Austin Public Health has resources as well, that you can access either through your health ministry or outside by contacting me or one of my coworkers. So we have walking groups, we have diabetes classes, we have healthy living classes. A lot of our programs have incentives built in where you're able to, sorry, where you're able to get all kinds of different resources and sort of goodies along the way through this health journey. We also have a Take Ten class, which is a CPR class that's hands only. And so that's offered within church congregations or small group settings. We have tobacco-free education, we have tobacco-free education, we also have drowning prevention, we have a falls prevention program. And I'm just listing out a couple of things, so y'all know that it's way more in just my department, and that's just my department by itself. So what's really nice is that I can help you access other pieces of Austin Public Health. If you don't, if there's a resource that you're looking for, you can contact me and I can get you connected. And as a whole, city of Austin, when you think of parks and wrecks and your community centers, offer a lot of resources as well. So we wanna help you be the healthiest version of you, to feel alive and celebrated and excited, and help you whatever you may need. So I wanna make sure that you know that Austin Public Health is here for you, that we have all kinds of resources available to you. If I didn't mention something that got you excited, by all means, I have way more out there at the table and more at my office. So by all means, please come and visit me, I'm out in the front here, and I'll make sure that you have my contact information. If you know of another church that may be looking for resources, or whatever the case might be, maybe they don't have a health ministry, let them know that we actually have a program that's called a Health Ministry Partnership. And so it allows them to learn about health ministries, to sort of get their feet wet, to see that there's all kinds of different shapes and sizes of health ministries. They don't have to be big, they can be small, they can be whatever needs that that community has. And then as well, we also have a partnership where they can do goal setting and they can get presented for the great worth that they're doing with goals within their church. So I really am excited to be here. We have some great presenters to talk about all the different resources that are available in your community, absolutely free. And I really am excited. If you have any questions, please let us know. Thank you so much, have a great day.
Hello. My name is Brian Potter. I thank you for hosting us, Reverend. Thanks to the church. I'm glad to be here. I do health insurance. I do Obamacare. I've been with Obamacare since it was before the law. First president I ever voted for that won. Thank you very much, Barack Obama. I very much believed in the health insurance program, and I believed in people not having, to be limited by not having pre-existing condition. I believed in that very much. So I worked for the TDI, that's where I met Angela and Dr. Reverend Nate. And I got involved with Obamacare when it became law, before it was actually a thing. When I left the state, I became a health insurance agency that just did Obamacare. And so I've got lots of experience in it, but what I really want is for people to know that there are half a million people in the state of Texas that could get Obamacare, full-blown health insurance, the enhanced versions, for free. We know that, because people file taxes and it's based on your income. So does anybody know here, know anybody that does not have health insurance and doesn't make a lot of money? Because I can help them more than likely. And if I can't help them, my time at the state, when I worked in the counseling and advocacy programs, I know all kinds of resources, like Age of Central Texas and the city of Austin, but all other ones. If you're above 65, I can help you. If you're below 65, I can help you. I keep this very brief. The other thing I want to know is, I wanna teach somebody else what I know how to do. It is the hardest thing in the world to find somebody that wants to do what I do. They think it's too complicated, but I'll teach them. I wanna mentor somebody, and I want somebody that is from the community that they wanna help, because I know it's very difficult to have somebody that looks exactly like me to come into the community and say, "Trust me, let me teach you how to do these things." I don't expect that. I expect to talk to people and I can show them what I know. And that's what I really want, is to help somebody within the community, to help the community, because my old joke is, it's a great job and it's a get-rich-slow scheme, very slow, but it's very rewarding work when you help people that really need it. Like Nate was just saying, if somebody needs to get a doctor or go to the hospital and they don't have insurance, that is a terrible position to be in. Everybody knows that. With no further ado, I'm in the back. Nobody wants to ask me questions up here. They all wanna ask me personal questions. We're in the back, we can talk to anybody.
Thank y'all so much for being here tonight. We are really grateful that you came to learn about resources here in the community. My name is Rob Fabian. I'm with Age of Central Texas, and we are very grateful to the church for allowing us to be here tonight, to host this event with all of these amazing resources, so that we can share with you, so that you can better know what's available to you here in the community. Our organization is a nonprofit that was founded right here in Austin. We were founded 36 years ago, and we were founded to help older adults and family caregivers so they could thrive here in the community. Our goal is to make Austin and Central Texas the best place in the nation to grow older. And we do that by providing resources and assistance to both older adults, so they can stay connected in the community, so that they can continue to be a vital part of our lives and our community, but also to help the family caregivers. I'm a caregiver myself. I'm taking care of my parents. They live independently still in Round Rock, they're in their mid-80s, but they're able to do that because I help them out. In fact, the statistics say that about 40% of us are currently caring for another older family member. There's a very famous saying that says that there's four kinds of people in the world. There are people who are caregivers, there are people who have been caregivers, the people who will be caregivers, and the people being cared for. And so that's why we exist. Once a year, I get the privilege of going and speaking to elementary school students at a particular school. And talking to them about aging is kind of threw me for a loop the first time, because I wasn't really sure how to talk to them about it, because they think their parents are old and their parents are 30, so they don't really have a concept of aging. So I hit on this idea. So what I do when I go to speak to them, and I say, "How many of you, when you get to high school, you're going to take driver's ed, and you're gonna learn how to drive a car, and you're gonna get your driver's license?" Well, all their hands go up. I say, "All right, how many of you in about, oh, 40 years or so, you're gonna have your parents move into your house, and then you're gonna take care of them for the rest of your lives? How many of you are gonna do that?" Well, none of their hands go up. So I tell them, "Here's the reality. For every person out there who's driving a car, that's how many people in our community are caring for somebody else. The difference is, you learn how to drive a car, but nobody ever teaches you how to be a caregiver, and that's why we're here." And then the light bulbs go off in their heads and they ask brilliant questions. But that's why we're here, is to help our families to be able to continue to thrive. I know personally caregiving is very difficult. It's expensive, it takes a lot of time, it's, everything changes on a day-to-day basis. And even though I have been doing my job with this wonderful organization for eight years, there are things that I have no earthly idea what to do when Dad does something completely out of the blue, because he is starting to have dementia. But I know that I've got experts back at my office that I can ask for free, and they're all there for you as well. You know, we want to be a resource for our community, that's why we exist. We've got wonderful programs that can help older adults stay connected in the community. We have the only licensed day centers in Central Texas for older adults that can't stay at home by themselves during the day. So for example, I have to go to work and I can't leave my dad by himself, what do I do? Dad can go to the day center. It's designed like a social club, so he's going to his social club during the day. But I know that it is a licensed medical model day center where he's going to be safe, he's got a nurse who's gonna watch over him, he's gonna have a fun day full of activities, and then he gets to go home. We also have a health equipment lending program. I brought a few pieces with me today. If you ever need a walker, a wheelchair, a shower bench, a rollator, a new cane, any of those items, we'll give them to you for free, no questions asked. That's what we do. We have a program, it's available to anyone in the community, there's no age restriction, there's no financial restrictions, nothing. It's if we've got it and you need it, you can have it. We have a resource center where you can come and get assistance for whatever it is with your aging and your caregiving needs. If you need to find out if Dad might qualify for veterans assistance, because he was in the military, we can help you do that. If you need some help trying to figure out someone that can come and help at the house, because we need someone to come for a few hours, but I don't have a whole lot of money, well, we can help you find somebody that can do that. If you wanna just come and shut the door and cry because taking care of your mom is making you insane, and your sister is telling you you're doing it all wrong, but she won't help you at all, come on down. That's why we're there. We've got classes for caregivers that we offer throughout the entire year. We have workshops that we do, they're all for free. We're here to help serve you and to be a navigation center for you, to help connect those dots to the fabulous resources like these that are here in the community. You know, no one ever taught us how to take care of our family members. Many of us didn't grow up with our family members around us. We didn't learn from that experience of seeing our grandparents being cared for by our parents. And so we don't have that knowledge within us. And so knowing where to find those resources, knowing how to be able to be the best caregivers that we can, that's why we exist, is to help you in that journey, because we want Austin to be the most wonderful place to grow older. Thank y'all so much for being here tonight. We're so grateful to all these resources that are here. We're grateful for you to be here, so that we can share this information, and hopefully then it gets shared throughout your congregation and throughout your community. So anytime that you need any of us, know that we're here to help you.
Good evening. First, I wanna give honor to God and to my pastor and his wife, and to all of the saints in the house. And of course, my wife, who is my helpmate in this effort, and she's a nurse, and so I have free help. But I pay for it in other ways, trust me. I wanna talk to you just a little bit about the Black Men's Health Clinic. This is an effort that I believe was placed on my heart years ago, and it was a vision that I felt the time would come, when it would be right to try to unfold it. Over the last year, we poured ourselves into this project, and people say, "Well, why are you doing this? There are health clinics all over town." I had a career in healthcare, and I understand that there are still gaps. And no matter how many clinics you have, you still have some people who are not gonna go to the doctor, especially men. And so what we did was create a place that we think is, I use a few words, it's a place of safety, it's a place of healing, and it's a place of restoration. So our services are holistic. We want to address everything from head to toe. We start with mental health. And I'm glad that we have ladies in the audience, because what I find is, once ladies know what we're doing and how we can help their men, I don't have to worry about the fellas lining up, the ladies are gonna help me, because they want their men to be here for a long time, and that's what I want. So I'm just gonna follow my notes, because we have a limited amount of time here. But our mission is to improve the health status for men of color through culturally appropriate holistic mental and physical health services. Our target population is African-American and Hispanic men residing in the Eastern Crescent of Travis County. So why do we do this? Let me leave you with a few facts. The life expectancy for African-American men is 7.1 years less than for other races. Stroke kills 180% more African-American men than other races. African-American men are 30% more likely to die from heart disease. Hispanic men are more likely to have diabetes and related kidney failure. Mental health utilization is limited within the African-American male population. So how do we do this work? Our strategies include to improve healthcare access for men of color in the Eastern Crescent. And the way we do that is through partnerships and affiliation. We acknowledge that local historical events and cultural differences have resulted in longstanding disparities. We didn't get here by accident. Increased trust in the local healthcare system is a primary goal of ours, and to provide disease prevention education to address health literacy. We have a number of partners. I heard my brother Robinson say earlier that we have to have partners to do this work, and it takes a village. It takes a city, not a village, to do what we're trying to do. The scope of services that will be provided at our clinic is primary care, specialty care referrals, mental health, family crisis management, trauma-informed care training, substance abuse prevention, dietary services, integrated behavior health, and... abuse prevention, dietary services, integrated behavior health and primary care providers, and men's health screenings. So the way we're going to launch our project is, we're going to have a series of Saturday morning men's health screenings. And the goal is to get as many men out as we can so that they can be screened. Our pastor said, we would do better if we know better. And so I think if we know what's going on inside our bodies, some of us would probably take action. And so you'll be hearing about that. We will be launching this month in June. Community Care will be providing doctors at our location to get us started. And I asked that they do evening clinics because when we did our survey, we learned a lot of men can't get to the doctor because they're working. And so we're going to start with two evenings a week, and Community Care will have their providers there. Throughout the summer, they'll continue to add more clinics. And so the other partners that we have there, and I just want to name a few, the city of Austin, Austin Public Health, Travis County, Austin Travis County Integral Care, Dell Medical School, University of Texas School of Social Work, University of Texas School of Nursing, Ascension Seaton Healthcare, and then we have our own in-house provider, Dr. Kadir. So that's who we are. That's what we're doing. You'll hear much more during the month of June. We didn't want to say much until we had our providers lined up. Right now, we do have mental health services on Friday and Saturdays, and we also have Sickle Cell Association there that will do testing two times a month. School of Nursing, they're there every Monday to handle blood pressure medicine and monitoring. So we do have services, but the big launch will occur in the next couple of weeks and you'll hear about it. I'll get with Sister Lisa and she'll help me make sure we put it out there because we want you men to come because we want you to live a long time. Thank you.
All right, all right. We are truly grateful for all of our presenters and the information that they are prepared. You know, I was on, in September, I'll reach 30 years with the state. Now, I'm not ready to retire, but I'm reading the information. Amen. Because, you know, a lot of time, we get the information too late. You know, when it's presented to us early, we don't want it because we don't need it. But then by the time we need it, it ain't available. And so we're trying to get you information now that you may not think, I don't need it now. You know, mom is doing good, mom is on her own, but you and I both know that could turn on a dime, you know? And so take advantage. They do have a contact sheet here, you know, have that information available to you where you can reach out and call them. There are various telephone numbers. We also want to give a special shout out to Sister Deborah Duncan. Amen. She is the St. James Wellness Ministry Manager here at St. James, and she has been working like a choir member during this pandemic. Amen. She's working just as hard as a choir director, setting up clinics and setting up shots and availabilities and making sure events like this can be hosted here at St. James. We also want to give a shout out to my big sister, Angela Bigham. She is my superhero, and now she's becoming a superhero in the city. I've been trying to keep it a secret on the low for as long as I could, let her just use those superpowers to help me. But now she's branching out. So we're just grateful for her and her service with Deborah Duncan, making sure that information is available to us. Information is power. You know, and people still say that if you want to keep information from some people, just put it in a book. Now, you know, you can't just Google everything. Some things, you're going to have to go to a source and get some real clean truthful information. And so we're grateful. Is there any questions? Anyone have any general question that you want to ask?
Good evening. I want to thank you so much for being here, and it is quite profound. And I would be remiss, Ms. Hall, to not mention how appreciative we are. I remember Sister Hayden and Dr. Welks, and they were here on the front end of COVID, taking chances, taking risks. And I am personally proud of black women of God who have stepped up on the forefront and as you continue to do the work that many are not doing. As I heard you speak, I am semi-retired, but I'm compelled and I continue to go in public housing, as I'm doing now with the Boys and Girls Club, to make sure they have access to information and resources. And I'm doing that now in another arena, but I may speak with you since you put the call out. I am obedient as I can be. So I thank you. Dr. Wallace, thank you for the call and what you mentioned about women. And as you can tell, I'm nervous and passionate about what I'm saying as I stand here because I stand here in the presence of God. As you prepare men for their health, please remember the women and what we've gone through for years and years. As legislation is running women down all across the nation with these sensitive issues, we need our men to rise up. We need you. We are constantly pressing forward as best we can. You see us in the church, and we've always been in the church, but there's more. There's more that needs to go into the ears of the brothers, and there's more that needs to come out. I came here really to ask a question about the vaccines. It wasn't about none of that, but I'll ask the nurses. Thank you so much.
Anyone else?
I just want to echo the gratitude to all of our presenters tonight. Thank you for being here. Thank you, Pastor, for allowing this session. Knowledge is power. And I'm really grateful to hear Brother Wallace hit on mental services. And so my question is, I'm trying to get to it, but my question is, we have we have turned a page on mental health awareness, but I'm getting the impression it's all about mental crisis. And so I'm wondering if any of you have plans to focus on mental health at all ages, especially with our young folks? That's my question.
I got an answer for that. Texas is the worst state in the United States for mental health access, 50th out of 50. It is the number one thing people ask me about when they talk about Obamacare, and number two isn't even close. The pandemic has really made this to the forefront where people are struggling and reaching out. Crisis management is calling 211 and suicide prevention. Ms. Hall is going to definitely say something more about this. Obamacare, well, go back. Mental health has to be treated like health. It's the mental health parody of law of 1990. It's only been 32 years that that has been the law, but we're not even close to accommodating what we need for mental health. Obamacare, healthcare must include mental health and treat it the same way as regular health insurance. There should be no stigma about it. People are struggling. Does anybody, raise your hand if you've never known anybody that had a mental health crisis? Anybody, raise your hand, please. Everybody knows somebody's had a mental health problem. So I'd be glad to help anybody on that. Getting in line and fighting for your place is how I coach people through this because that's for real. You fight to get in line. You fight to get your spot, to get your co-pay for $5 or $0 to be able to talk to somebody, and that's your right. It's part of the law.
So I completely agree. Mental health is one of those things that I'm so glad that we're talking about now because we used to not, you know? And in our community, in the community at large, it was something that was taboo. We didn't talk about it. And so I'm glad that we speak about it now, but you are absolutely right that now we know, how do we get, how do we get the services? How do we get the resources? And so having that mental health provider is really important, talking to each other, connecting with each other. Sometimes we forget that sometimes just talking to each other, because sometimes you can feel so alone, and it's not always about crisis. Just like you said, I have a bad day. That's not a crisis, but I like to talk to somebody and I don't want to be judged, right? So I always encourage people to talk to each other, let other people know you're struggling because most likely, Lord knows, we all are struggling in different ways, and when we can talk to our sisters and brothers, that makes us feel better. I want you to know, if you don't know, Integral Care and NAMI, which stands for National Association for Mental Illness, those organizations have support groups, and I have a little bit of their information out here, but I'm happy to connect if your health ministry doesn't have their contact information. They have things for non-crisis, right? Because you're right, when you're in crisis, there is a number to call. Everybody knows the number. Maybe you don't. We'll make sure we have that number because sometimes we don't, right? And so we want to make sure that we have those resources before we need them, those crisis information, but supporting each other before it gets to that point is really important. So I agree, it's really hard to access mental health. If you have a provider and you can connect with your provider to get in, of course, that's the best way. If you can go through Obamacare, whatever those means are, it really is knowledge is power, but I want you to know, there are support groups, there are things for non-crisis, but it is difficult to access. But I want to make sure that sometimes it's there and we just aren't using it. So if you don't know about NAMI, if you don't know about Integral Care or other different services, let me know. I can connect you to those people and we can talk about it. But I really, really want to remind people, talk to each other because sometimes when I say I'm having a bad day, people look at me and they don't want to tell me they're having a bad day too. And so I'm like, then I feel all alone. Lord, I'm sorry. Y'all understand. So it's really important to communicate with each other, let people know that it's okay to be having a bad day. It's okay to say this word, mental health, because a lot of people still don't want to say it. It is just about making sure that we know our mind, body, and soul are connected, and we need to take care of all those things to serve God, okay? We cannot just take care of one. I'm off my soapbox. But I want y'all to know that I'm here for y'all. If you need information, I will help you as best as I can, and so will these young people right here too.
And very quickly, you can call. I'll give you my card. We have mental health providers already at our clinic, and I think you'll be pleased. They cover a full array of services. And so if you can't find it anyplace else, reach out to us. Thank you.
Amen, amen. And one of the, I like that word that Brian brought out, parity, that it has to be treated equally as your medical surgical benefits are. At this time, Brianna just twisting in her seat to say something, so let's just hold her off for about 30 more seconds. I see you. I see you. About to stand up and wave at me in a minute. Okay, we're going to have her to come. I'm going to wipe the mic. Come on, come on now.
Well, I can't help it. I'm passionate about what I do, but I just wanted to piggyback on that question, and I understand that you asked about resources specifically for younger folks, but I just wanted to piggyback on the fact that Medicare Advantage Plans also cover mental health in the same way Brian was saying and that Janice was saying that they're treating mental health as health, as it should be. So Medicare Advantage Plans also cover inpatient stays. You can go up to 90 days inpatient stay at a Medicare facility, or facility that takes Medicare for very low copays. You can get free telehealth visits for mental health, and all of this is alongside your regular benefits of your hospital stays and things like that. So it's just a little-known fact that Medicare Advantage does also have such rich mental health benefits. So I just wanted to add that as well. Yes, you want some more information?
You're okay? I know where your office is. I'll come to your, I'll come to your office. Again, we're grateful.
I don't know how to work that thing.
Some people, some people, man, they become family too quick. You become a family too fast, moving too fast. Slow down, slow down. Again, we're grateful. We do want to remind you that we do have lunch boxes in the back. We're going to ask Pastor if he would have closing remarks and benediction, and then we'll be able to move around and get access to this information. Amen? They're going to be in this hallway here to the left and in the front. These two going to be in the front. These two going to be in the hallway with Brianna. They're going to be on this wall here. You were saying something I didn't hear. A big amen for Dr. Robinson for a job well done. And we want to give you plenty of time tonight to talk to the panel, and I just want to say to you guys again, thank you all for coming. Sister Duncan Hurdle, thank you all, and Sister Angela for the work that you do in trying to help people holistically, and it's going to be better. The more information we get, the more we can operate. I was just sitting there thinking about that 24 years ago when we lost our daughter. Well, one of the degrees I have, I taught psychology, and so I tell people, if I'm going to take care of my physical health, because I taught physical education, it's all right to take care of my mental health. And my church knows that their pastor has a therapist, been having one before I lost my daughter because I need help, and I try to remove that stigma from our members that it's all right to seek mental help. See about yourself, not only just physically, spiritually, emotionally, but mentally as well. And I'm just excited about what's going to happen tonight. Be sure to see, people, thank you again Reverend Wallace. Thank you, and thank you all for coming, giving us information that we can do better and live longer. Can you imagine if we can live to be 100, 125 and be serving the kingdom? All right, I threw that out there. Amen. For all Christians, can you imagine to be 100 and still able to preach and carry on for the kingdom of God? Amen. Yeah, amen. So we just thank the Lord for you tonight, and be sure to get the information that you need. All right. Thank you tonight. Dr. McCowen, will you come and pronounce the benediction, and then we'll go to the different places? Again, I'm going to recommend that the next presidential debate be moderated by Dr. Robinson because he keep you on time. He had told me, my elders He had told me, my elders who are here, we have an elders meeting at 7 o'clock. Robinson told me, "We're going to be through at 7:00." I said, "I like that." So we're going to ask Robinson to moderate the next presidential debate, so we get out on time. All right, come, let me wipe this off of Dr. McAlvin today. Thank you again for coming. Thank all of you who put this together. Amen.
Shall we all stand? And let us pray. Lord God, we are grateful for the information that we received on tonight. God, thank you for the sacrifice of these individuals sharing with the community and the opportunity that we have to better ourselves mentally, physically, and spiritually. Thank you for this church and its concern about your people, God. Thank you for this pastor, all who have been involved on tonight, God. Those who put together this program leading up to tonight, God, and what we were able to experience. Thank you for what's going to take place in the hallways, God. Information that's going to bless someone that can bless someone else. Thank you for the information that's going to take place in the foyer. And thank you for just us being able to leave edified and more in tune with how we can better serve you by better taking care of ourselves. Thank you for every individual here, God, those who will stay around, those who have to depart. May we leave, oh God, and we get to our respective destinations and find them better than when we left. The Lord bless thee and keep thee. The Lord make his face to shine upon thee and be gracious unto thee. The Lord lift up his countenance upon thee and give thee peace. Amen.
Hello, we are the St. James Marriage Ministry. Living and loving together, marriage matters. Where our stated mission is to strengthen marriages through a commitment to God's Word and to nurture a healthy union that ultimately builds up a body of Christ in the church and the home. Our ministry goals are, first, magnifying God, strengthening families, and enhancing the growth of the church through the marriage ministry. Second, helping husbands and wives achieve a godly legacy for their families. Third, to promote personal and couple devotion, as well as planned enjoyable activities. And finally, to commit to renewed ministry functions to enhance living and loving together. As we accomplish these goals through the various fellowship and enrichment activities that are aimed towards supporting married couples in building godly, stable homes for their families. We are ensuring that together we may go out and claim our city and even our communities one family at a time. For the kingdom of God, we're calling all married couples. We're better together. We need to. Want more information on the marriage ministry? Visit us at the marriage ministry website here in here. Also, we ask you to follow the listed survey link to respond to a few questions to let us know how we can continue to refine the marriage ministry at St. James. Thank you.